Good evening and welcome to the Port Clinton City Council Regular Meeting, August 27, 2019. Before we begin this evening, Mr. Snyder has announced that tonight...
Good evening. I'm proud to announce that as of about 7:20 this evening, the boil water alert has been lifted. Cheers!
I'll give it to that. That's free.
Thank you.
On that note, please stand and join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance for the Lord's Prayer and taking a moment of silence for our volunteers, veterans, and first responders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our men, I will be standing, I came to come, I will be done, honor their fitness and health. Give us today our daily bread, and to do as our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the good of us all. The land is given, our home and the world are our home. Amen.
Thank you. Well, the clerk, please call the wall. Steve Hilo? Excuse. Phil Friedman?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Logan Kigman?
Here.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Here.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Council, you received the June 25, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they are written?
Madam President, I think that we hold off on approval for this as we received these notes last night. We have not had a real chance to produce them. We'd like to have them suspended until next time.
Motion to suspend or table, if you would, to table the minutes until the next meeting?
Second to.
Second to Mr. Friedman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Not many opposed? Minutes are tabled to the next meeting on September 10. The chair notes that certification has been received regarding the compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. We'll now move to the guest presentation of the evening, and we will bring up the, excuse me, the members of the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council. And I'll start with Mrs. Morgan. If you want to all step forward and introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, I'm Carol Morgan. I'm an ex officio of the Greater Port Clinton Area Arts Council.
I'm Johnny Meyer-Stedek, and I'm on the board.
Brenda Proden-Vale, I'm on the treasure.
And I'm Barb Wenzinger, I'm the secretary.
We were at the listening room preparing for an event, Melo Cellos, this past spring, and the mayor was there, busy working. We started talking about his office for some strange reason, and he invited us down to come and look at his office, which has nothing on the walls. So, from that, there were three of us that decided maybe we needed to do something to put some artwork on his walls, and we came up with a program that is called Capture Our Community. It was a photo contest, and we put it out there on social media, and there were some wonderful people that entered. And all of these pictures are pictures that have been entered that qualified to be part of the program. Carol Risenikoff, who was with Focus Point Forever, a wonderful person, was a judge, as was Olin Martin and Keith Fleming. So, we have pictures and awards to give to these wonderful people.
Again, on behalf of myself, I want to thank the Arts Council for their efforts in putting this together and organizing and making this happen. The idea here was to add some local light and color and activity to a really dull-looking office. It's, you know, my opinion of this, I'm just running out space in there. It actually is a community room. So hopefully, we'll be able to continue this for years to come and add color to not only the mayor's office, but hopefully, the hallway and maybe even council chambers someday. The pictures that you see here and the winning photographs, the top four, will be used, when appropriate, for city marketing materials and other promotional activities to help boost the image of the city of Port Clinton. And I can't thank you enough for not only this project, but for what the Arts Council does in our community with all sorts of great things, like the Art Walk. If you haven't been to the Art Walk on the fourth Thursday of every month, May, June, July, August, and September, I would encourage you to do that. The drum circle last Saturday was spectacular. A couple of my friends from overseas accompanied me to that, and I think they had a good time. I couldn't really understand what they were saying. But, again, thank you, thank you so very much, and we are talking about some pretty substantial things, hopefully, that will happen in the city of Port Clinton in conjunction with this Arts Council that could change, I believe, could change the arts community in the greater Port Clinton area. So I look forward to working through that and getting everything going.
Don't forget the murals and the statue.
The mural statue? Tell your story, go.
On this side of the Clinton house is the mural, Greetings From Port Clinton. All of those photographs came from the Ottawa County Museum, and that entire thing was done graffiti. Everything was done with a spray can, nothing was done with a paintbrush. The murals at Friendship Park, the Perspectives mural, those would get changed out periodically by local artists. There'll be a call for artists, and that gets changed out. So, all of this is done primarily with local artists. There's also at Friendship Park, the Captain and the Kid, a bronze sculpture that was done by Andy Saxstutter, who was a local person, who now has made it big time selling his sculptures all over the place. So, we're very proud of what we've accomplished and the wonderful team that works really hard, and for all of you that help participate and volunteer, and we hope you get involved more. So thank you very much for everything.
And I understand you had a variety of participants, not only from Port Clinton, but from U.Syrus as well, and one entry circa Taiwan. You'll hear about that a little later. And I know many of you that have been to this room multiple times have heard me say this, but I'll say it again just because it touched me so much. Last March, I was very fortunate enough to spend a month in Asia. In Taiwan, and we have two individuals here from Taiwan, one from Taipei, one from Kaohsiung in the south. When Taiwan was formed in 1949 by the free Chinese who were fleeing the communists, one of the five, the fifth of five components of their entire culture is art and entertainment and enjoyment. And everywhere you go in Taiwan, whether it's the big city or a rice paddy or a roadside fruit stand, there is art. And it's interactive, and it brings light, joy, and entertainment. It's a point of pride for the individuals and the country as a whole. So it was amazing to see how that is reflected in their culture and society. And I know Lynn, who, well, she knows, so I won't steal. Received third place in this event enjoys photography a great deal and has some great, amazing things on her Facebook. So, without further ado, are you guys ready for this? There were four... There were four individuals selected, two third-place recipients, a second place, and a grand prize winner. We'll start off with third place. I know she's not here, but her mother is, Heather Isbell. Mom, you want to come on up? And this was the photograph that was submitted for third place. Next, and I don't know how to say it in Mandarin, but it's Lai Ting Lin. Come on up, Lynn. Lynn is from Taipei, Taiwan. There's your certificate, and this is the photograph that she submitted. And I'm glad I wasn't a judge, because I was standing about three feet away from her when she took the picture. In second place, is it Lona Cox?
Lana.
Lana, I'm sorry Lana, forgive me. Come on up. This was a very creative photo. Did you have someone that you know recently graduate?
My daughter.
Your daughter? Picture of the...
Caps.
...being tossed in the air. And finally, the grand prize winner, who will also receive a $100 Chamber Bucks gift certificate, Rebecca Key. First, the important part, the certificate. And then the lesser importantly, the other certificate. And her picture was of the White House, which has kind of become a symbol of our community. Congratulations. Ladies, thank you very much for everything you do. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Please go right ahead.
Anyone from the Arts Council, if anyone would be interested in getting more information, how can they, whom should they contact?
They can go on the website, ottawacountyarts.org, and it has how to become a member, all the events, pictures of past events, and we'd love for you to be part of the organization.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your hard work and efforts.
We will now move to the public comment portion of our evening. Here in the first five, please.
Is here fun? Long time listener, first time caller. My issue tonight I want to bring up is just about notifications and responses. The boil water advisory was the most recent one, and how we got notifications out to the community and the people. I happened to see it when I was getting off work. I saw it posted, shared by multiple people on Facebook, first time I could get on Facebook during the day. So I sent it home. My girlfriend said, "Do you know about this?" She hadn't, she's not a member of a lot of the pages, and started sharing it with other people, sending it out, calling, trying to let people know, people who have children, people who have pets, people who are at home. Not once did I get a text message, an email, like we do when we have snow, the snow warnings, the weather advices. Now I get these because I work 35 minutes away. I run a warehouse. I've got people who come from multiple different counties, so I've got to keep up with the weather alerts for Downwellard, Shelby, Sandusky, Greymont, Norwalk, Bellevue, here. So I'm trying to keep up with those. And I get waterfall advices from every one of those, but not one text or email came through. The only place I could find any information, really, was looking at the messages that were posted on Facebook when the message went out. Called City Hall there. Nothing was put on any answering machine. Not a single message about it. I called three different, you know, pressed three different buttons to get different departments to see if anything was there. Not a single thing was put on any of those stating that the city was under a boil order. I called the police department, called the dispatcher. While she was, she didn't know what was going on, it's helpful. I don't think she was adequately informed or knew enough to say what to do. In fact, it's pointed toward the sheriff's department. So when I called them to find out, are we talking about more of a, okay, if we boil everything, how long? Is it more of a chemical? Or are we looking at biological, or what? Are we looking at just maybe contaminants? Because I've got, you know, treatment systems in my house. I put my ice machine on one filtration system. I've got one for my water system. No one knew. The dispatch, the sheriff's office, actually pointed me back toward the police department. So what's someone to do when we're trying to get information? I called my councilman. I called councilman-at-large. One of them got a response back, and got back to me. We have so many different ways now with technology, with notifying people. Not everyone's on Facebook. People take Facebook hiatus. People aren't on the phones at work. Texts, emails, social media. I do think people need to take responsibility and call ahead, call in and find out, but when there's nothing posted or no messages, what are we to do? Something to think about. When was the last time the city had an emergency notification drill? Schools do fire drills. I remember as a kid doing, you know, hurricane drills down south, going out, putting a book over our head in the hallway. Have we done one anytime recently? How many times did we grow up listening to that long beep on the radio or on TVs, "Well, this is an alert from your, you know, national broadcasting or local broadcasting system. This is only a test." Something to think about. Another thing, being notified. It's one of the biggest things. We get complaints from our people who work for me, stuff like that. Notification, people want to be informed. The last meeting minutes that were posted was from 11 weeks ago. Think about that. Rolled on a date, June 11. That's 11 Tuesdays. Not a single other thing from what happened at meetings have been posted. What's someone to do who's got kids and sports now during the summer? Or people who work second, third shift? People like me who don't have jobs, we always get out on at a certain time. You know, I'm sorry, so I don't have set times, but like to come in and try and keep up with what's going on. We can go to a different part and look and see what's coming up, what the, you know, meeting was to talk about, any ordinances. But when we try and find out, well, what were the results from it? What's going on? There's nothing. We've got an avenue of being able, we've got a gentleman here who's videotaping. We've got Wi-Fi. We can't post stuff from Facebook Live or other medias, or at least put a video on so people who can't make it to a meeting can see what happened? How many times I've heard from different people when I've called about different, when was it garbage cans? You know, y'all had that, "Why didn't I just hearing about this? Now we've been talking about it." Well, it's kind of hard to keep up with a lot of things that's going on here if we don't make it to a meeting. And not always can citizens. So I just ask that we take this time, look at these things, and see what else can be done. There are many ways to get things out. Can we please look at ways to make our city better by informing every citizen of things going on? Or giving them ways to get information? Besides calling and harassing, basically, our council people or Mayor Owen people, you know?
You did not reach out to me. Had you, you would have had the answer.
Right. But I had two councilmen.
You reached out to her in the Ford area.
I have.
And I give you full, valid, everything you've said here, I've taken a note of, and I hope you and I will talk about what other communities are giving you their information like that. But you have a valid point about the minutes of this meeting, and that information from the administration to council, that concern for that very thing has been noted. I would tell you that there is a YouTube channel, and the videos that are taken here, being taken right now, those are all up to date, and you're on that YouTube channel because that comes from the city. That information is there. I think you've made a great point about some things. There were some failures yesterday, and the failures, I will take full responsibility for the fact that we didn't get it to our website, but I will be sharing in my report later some things that was planned before I knew you were coming, and I busted your chops when you got here. I didn't know why you were here. But that I intended to share, and I will share later. But I do want you to know, hear you, and we're gonna work on it.
You were exactly right. I didn't contact you. I know you put your cell phone number out, but I will say I contacted another council member who I checked with earlier today, who had not gotten a response back. Now that's according to them, so I, not 100%.
I did mail this morning, so I did not get a response.
But I understand you are one person and are a busy man. Same thing, people will call me to set up appointments for a load. As I said, I run a warehouse. I'm in meetings all day, but that's why I have to put in there, "Call this or email this address, do this," trying to give every possible avenue for someone to get the information they need, or get the appointments, in my case, that they need. I think, I believe it was Billy Rigoni who posted about making fun of the car where the Blues Brothers rode around, you know, making announcements. But how many police vehicles do we have that can go up and down streets with an announcement? And just put stuff out, too? I mean, if we're looking for ways, let's, you know, Beth, you were asking, no. Let's talk with other cities and not from back before we had all this stuff. Current, keep it up to date. I'm constantly in contact with other warehouses, saying, "Hey, how are you handling this?" Trying to get ahead in case I ever have to have an issue like that. I'm not trying to put anybody down, say anything bad. I hope everyone knows I'm, considering most people here are friends. Everyone else is acquaintances. But I think we all have the best interest of the town, and we can move forward from this agenda. I do ask that, you know, the biggest thing is, let's practice drills. Maybe some of them are just internally, but how do we get the communication out, what's the best way to build from there? Thank you.
We'll move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I mentioned last week that there were a couple of acts of heroism in our community over the month of July. And with your permission, Madam President, I'd like to make a quick phone call to someone who couldn't make it here this evening. We'll have a brief conversation with them, and then we'll have a conversation with a couple that are currently here in... 0678. That's okay. Hope everybody can hear this okay.
Hello?
Hi, Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
This is Mike Snyder, Mayor for the City of Port Clinton. How are you doing this evening?
Good, back here.
Good, good, good. Is your whole family with you tonight?
Exactly, my husband and I.
Oh, very good. Very good? Well, I'm currently sitting in a council chamber, and about 50 people are staring at me like, "What the heck am I doing here?" So I want to tell everybody a little bit about what happened back on July 22, and then if you will, tell your story, and we'll kind of go from there. But in a nutshell, I believe your family gathered to go out day on the lake, and sometime around 9:45 in the morning, you came across someone floating in the middle of Lake Erie, about five miles off of the mouth of the Portage River. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Yeah, it wasn't quiet now, that far, it was probably about half two miles.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly what happened.
So tell us what you saw and what you did.
We had a Commodore ferry, and that morning we woke up, and we were watching the light of the lake. We knew somebody had been at that, so we watched the boats start going. We watched the Canadians, you know, looking for something. We thought it might have been a cat's eye boat. So we were debating whether we go out fishing. We were going walleye fishing, and we come out there like every other week. And we were worried about the life of the lake, you know, whether we go out or not. But we decided to go ahead, so we took our time to go out, and we keep our boat in stronger waters. So we were there talking to the guys at the desk, and I was like, you know, I hope that if we go out, we don't find somebody who has passed away. I hope that, you know, we can help someone. I said, "Prayer for you, we're going out there." So we get in the boat, we start out with our family. And I usually sit in the cabin, but this time I decided to sit behind my husband on a board facing other directions. And he's always helped me to look in the water, you know, for whatever's always been looking in the water. And the joke to our families, I can't see anything. So, but we start going, and all of a sudden I see a flash of colors. I was like, "I'm seeing something Larry." And he's like, "Oh, no, okay, that's probably just a log." And I knew, like, in a instant, I, my whole body started just feeling of some kind of energy, I'm like, "No, no, no." And I stood up, and I was like, "Look over there." And then we watched, and we saw this, we saw a person. Like, that was a flash of colors, and she kept disappearing in the way. And I was like, "Oh, man." Okay, I was like, "This is her." And the person says, "Larry's like, 'Sit down, sit down, you're gonna go out." So I sat down, and she said that she knew that I saw her, because our reaction's like, you know, sad and animated. She could see me, like, I don't see. And then, and he, I'm like, and I guess that's part, the captain's part, going out in the water and carrying her.
Turned the boat and went to her. I think what I first saw, she did look like a piece of wood. You know, in the water, it was overcast. The water looked gray, you know, it was not much light up there. And she disappeared out of the water again, and then when she came back up again, it was me and waves. So I definitely knew for sure that it was a person about to leave. And we'd already turned boats to come back to her. My wife saw, since she saw, you know, in other directions. And I definitely did, I saw that little flash of, you know, flash color in the water, and she disappeared again. Water, and then in between the waves, little brothers rode around. And we tried to get her first time. She was so weak, she couldn't help at all. She couldn't grab onto my wife, she couldn't grab onto the rope, she couldn't grab onto the rope or anything. We had to circle the boat back around and come back around. And we got it, second time. And of course, she was purple. And she looked bad.
She looked up and said, "I'm sorry, I can't help you, help me." Sounds like that's the thing, because I'm not letting go. I mean, I've been on outside, and I tried to go out, but I was like, um...
We dropped her.
Yeah, I just, we had to pull her in. We go there, and we put this, this, this one over us, and now, and she's like, "I'm all like, can't go anymore." Yeah, she couldn't up there.
Of course, it was so rough, and it was tough to maneuver, you know. The waves were really big, and I think that's why there wasn't a lot of people out searching for her, because it was so, you know, it was all trapped in mud, it was really rough. And, you know, wrapped her up in a bunch of cordless, because the race was gonna go in shock. And after the water on, you know, that was our making everything else.
That's all.
Wrapped her up in a bunch of...
She said to me, she said, well, she gave me an indication, because I called my husband, so I called him and told him that we had his life. And then I called 911 and told them that we had her. And we went in and sent the rescue crew, and they pulled her out and took her, and then we went out tonight to see her in hospital, because I told my husband, "I need to see her, I need to see her here in the end of this night, to make sure she is okay." We did it now. And it was, I think it was a slight change, that's all there is to it, slight change. So happy that we just here to do that, and everything was perfect.
And we're so happy we're at the right place at the right time and chose to do the right thing. And for those of you that haven't figured out, because I neglected to mention it earlier, these are the folks that found and rescued the individual that was coming back from Kelly's Island with her family. The family was on a boat, she was on a jetski behind. The family turned around at one point, saw the jetski, but didn't see her. The individual spent, chief, 16, 17 hours?
Yes.
About 14.
14 hours in the water. Thankfully, she was wearing a life vest.
Through thunderstorms.
It threw thunderstorms and obviously, five-foot waves. And there was a reason you weren't underneath in the cabin. There's a reason you were sitting on that cooler.
Right. And I never, I never even, I said a prayer, my, with it, since I was a teenager, I said a prayer, I was like, you know, whatever's going on, let us, you know, be able to help you do something, you're not even gonna make that happen. And within ten minutes, I called her, and she was telling her.
On behalf of the victim, I'm sure she has thanked you several times, but I would personally like to thank you, and I know our community would like to thank you. And the next time you're in Port Clinton, I certainly would like to get together and formally present you with the key to the city as a thank you for doing the right thing at the right time, and appreciate your efforts and doing everything exactly the way it should have been done to save someone's life. You are truly a lifesaver, and that's something you can take with you forever.
I just can't make it do it, honestly. Can't make it work out right.
Thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to say additional to the gathered crowd? And again, thank your children as well for participating. You want to, again, I neglected to state your names and your children's names.
Lauren Daley. My wife's name's Christina Daley. My son's name's Zachary Daley. My brother, my brother was named Daley. And my father as well. Lauren Daley, senior. I guess, I think, you know, we really love going out there. I think, you know, we talk to a lot of the newest people when they're doing things. You know, really, they're quite capable, and you can express it like, you have to really be vigilant out there. I think a lot of people think, you know, you're on vacation or you're up here, it's totally whatever, but you've got to watch all the time. You've got to pay attention to what takes out stuff happens. And the other thing, too, is the life jacket. Like, Jim's life jacket was like a gray blue. It matched the water perfectly. You know, couldn't see anything, like, really even having to reflect it. Life jacket, or just that sort of situation, you know. just that sort of situation, you know.
That would be a bright color. They wouldn't have understood, it wouldn't have been, hopefully, your head is right.
You can say anything, all people, you know, keep their voice, you know, you don't, you know, in that place, dangerous, you know, sometimes.
Anyway, we love Port Clinton. We come out there, we're coming this, we love it up there. So, we appreciate you guys, this is the best area, we love it.
Thank you, we appreciate you. And I will get in contact with you over the next couple of days and we'll be certain to meet up.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, have fun there, everybody.
Same. Bye-bye. Thank you, Madam President. That was one that made, I leave. Stephen and Stephanie Hawieler, would you mind stepping up, please? I'll come over. Another story of the right place at the right time and doing the right thing. They will never forget July 27th of this year, not only because it was my birthday. Oh, thank you, thank you. But because of, again, being at the right place at the right time, we may all recall, there was a vessel just at the mouth of the Portage River. They throttled up and the boat exploded and three people ended up in the water. Well, these fine folks were, again, at the right place at the right time and did the right thing. Do you want to hear your story?
All I can, all I can say, just before we start that story, it's kind of a unique tie in all this. We stayed at the river, we made camp round off the Portage River, we were up here every week for the last six, seven years, we were up here every weekend, we loved this place. The lady who was in the water was the owner of that campground. And we had come in Friday night, the night before this accident that he's talking about now, we had understood the Coast Guard had set up camp in our campground looking for Jacob, you know, trying to, and we found out about this, we were going away, and oh my gosh, and we know this lady dearly, and that she was able to survive this, the water that long. And just, we're, I shouldn't say this, but she's got a nickname around camp, called a bopper. I don't know if she likes it, but she'll get over it. But yeah, that was a little tie-in to all of this. And then we had gotten up Saturday morning, on normal, we go fishing every, you know, every Saturday and Sunday, we'd, you know, boat. And we were heading out to the, to do some walleye fishing. We heard the explosion. We were about, I don't know, maybe a couple, two, three, four thousand feet away, I don't know, a quarter of a foot or half. But we heard the explosion, we seen the fireball, and we seen the guy tossed off the boat. We immediately turned around and went towards the boat. And about that time, two more gentlemen were on the boat. The boat was, you know, fast with the fire, they jumped off. So, we navigated over to the area and we put out lighters for her. And we were able to get them on the boat. We trucked them into the, you know, toward the jetty stress. By then, I think hundreds of people, I had already called 911 because they, they had more people there than, than we thought we would ever be there at that time. It was just another one of those right place at the right time things. Exactly. And we did one, like I said, the guy, the guy that was, I truly want to go, if anybody knows how he's doing though, because I know he was, you know, pretty hurt, pretty good.
I'll see if I can find other things we can't talk about, but...
Okay. Well, that's the one thing we really want to talk about more than anything else, so...
Not trying to be my best.
Yeah, that's, that's our story.
You stick with it.
Absolutely.
So, I also understand that this weekend is something special for the two of you.
It was our anniversary.
Oh, last weekend?
No, this past...
The Saturday? Well, 34 years. Congratulations.
It's Children's Day in Port Clinton.
Well, again, thank you both so very, very much for, again, doing the right thing at the right time. And on behalf of the citizens of Port Clinton, I would like to present you with the key to the city.
Awesome.
It'll open up everything but some of the beer coolies in.
Thank you very much.
Some amazing stories about life on Lake Erie and the Port Clinton area and the wonderful people that come up to, to call Port Clinton home in the summertime. I'm glad to hear that both of those folks that did the right thing come here quite often. Those are the kind of people that we like to see here in Port Clinton. So, moving on to some, some other activities, you may have noticed if you've been in the downtown area over the past couple of days, a giant chair at the intersection of Second and Madison Street. That was a joint effort between the City of Port Clinton and the Lake Erie Shores and Islands Welcome Center. There are several of those similar chairs throughout the greater Shores and Islands area. If you were at the Art Walk, it was, people were standing all over it. And every time I drive by, I see someone sitting there, standing and taking a photograph and that's exactly what it's meant to be. Get people out of their cars and walking the downtown area. Since we're talking about these giant Anarodak chairs, I want to point out that there are two Eagle Scout projects that are going to impact the city in a positive way. I'm going to screw up his, his name, but Cooper Kiwal, K-I-W-A-L, Kiwal, is working on making more smaller Anarodak chairs that we've placed around the, the city as part of his Eagle Scout project. And Elliot Augster, Elliot is going to renovate the lobby here at City Hall to make it look more welcoming. He's been working with the folks at the Idaho County Historical Museum to give memorabilia, to hang on the walls, new colors and so forth. So, we're looking forward to those. Both of those projects have been reviewed by the, the local scout masters and given the, the thumbs up. Now, there's just one more step and they both believe and their, their scout masters believe that the, the regional folks authorizing Eagle Scouts will, will make that happen as well. Kind of reminder, Rock the Light Music Festival is the weekend after Labor Day, the 6th and 7th. Eight artists, eight musicians, over two days, food trucks, lots of fun. Tickets are still available at the Chamber of Commerce office or the Great Lakes Popcorn Store. I want to congratulate the, the Lighthouse Conservancy on a wonderful, truly spectacular Lighthouse Festival, that's what it was, Lighthouse Festival last weekend. And it had grown considerably from the year before. I had the distinct honor of introducing House Representative Marcy Capter, who is the sixth longest, or sixth ranking person in the U.S. House and the longest-serving woman in the history of the U.S. Congress. So, that was a great honor for myself. And it was great to have her in the community. She, she talked about what a tremendous resource we have here in the, the lake and the river and, and how it could be used in a, in a variety of ways for education and so forth. It's football season, folks. As you know, I'm a Buckeye fan, but I just love football in general. This Friday night, the Redskins take on the Bellevue Redmen. But I'm more focused on 10 weeks from now, when the Redskins take on those idiots from Oak Harbor. And you can quote me on that one, because I am a Redskin. Say the same thing about the Wolverines. But I, I sent an email yesterday to the Honorable Mayor Babcock over in Oak Harbor, challenging him or extending my hand for a friendly wager. When the Redskins win on November 1st, that following Monday, he will be at Portland High School Cafeteria serving pizza to the seniors that played on the football team dressed in red and white. And should the unthinkable happen, I'll be doing the same over in Oak Harbor, wearing the, the green and red. Since we're on the topic of football, many of you may remember Irisa Thompson. And I know folks that were in the school district were sort of new. Irisa was my homeroom teacher back in high school. And anybody that had typing in Portland High School in the 80s, 90s, and maybe even the early 'os, I'm not real sure, may remember Irisa well. Irisa retired and she and her late husband moved to Las Vegas and, and now her grandson is of college age. And he is the starting quarterback for the UCLA Bruins. Yes. This Thursday night, the Bruins are taking on the Cincinnati Bearcats down in Cincinnati, that televised nationally on ESPN. So, if you want to take a look at Dorian Robinson Thompson and his connection, although be it stretched, through, through the City of Port Clinton, that would be a, a great opportunity. So, I know Irisa is, is very proud of, of Dorian and what he's accomplished. When he came out of high school two years ago, he was the third-ranked quarterback in the, in the nation. So, that, that's a tremendous, tremendous honor. Since we're talking about football and schools, remember to watch the buses, they're out and about. Want to thank Dave Kobel and Kobel Construction. Dave is constructing the, the pavilion over at the Senior Center on Third Street. He's volunteering his time, Dave, as obviously as a local contracting company, he's a member of the Portland Fire Department and recently earned his EMT certification. So, thank him for doing that. Moving along with the Senior Center, on September 20th, at 11:30 to 1:00, the Senior Center will be having an open house and I'll be preparing hamburgers, hot dogs on, on the grill, hopefully under the completed pavilion for everyone to enjoy. The community, the seniors are welcome to attend that. Many of you in this, in this room have been following the, the Portage, Portage River Water Trail. There's going to be a follow-up meeting on Wednesday, the 4th of September at 9:00 a.m., 9:00 to noon, at the Elmore Community Center over in Elmore, Ohio. And I have contact information should anybody be interested in attending that meeting. I know it's kind of strange to talk about this at the end of August, but the Walleye Drop is just around the corner. Don Clemmons, Chairman of the Walleye, does the Walleye Drop Committee, has asked, he's looking for assistance, people with great ideas and, and great work ethics and want to give back to the community. If you're interested in helping out with this year's Walleye Drop, please give him a call and he'll be happy to, to listen to you and, and put you to work somewhere. Over the past several years, and I, I don't quite know how many, but I, I can remember four years ago, as property manager of a condo complex, getting a letter from the city talking about backflow preventers. And a backflow preventer needed to be installed on a variety of meters around, around town, primarily commercial and heavy users. Well, we're to the point now where most of those users have complied with the regulation that was brought upon the city through the EPA. Well, there's still a handful of, of large consumers that, that haven't complied with that. And counsel, I just want to let you know that a third and final letter is going out to those individuals and we can provide that list to you if you'd like. They'll be given a date and if that date, if the service is not, if the backflow preventer is not installed by that date, their, their water service will be turned off until so, until they make those, those proper adjustments. Those letters will be going out, I think, later this week, if not, first part, by the end of the week, those letters will be going out to those, those high-water users. Republic Services contract has finally been signed and, and put in, put in place. Part of that, that provision and the ordinance requires that Republic Service be the only service provider to residential dwellings in the City of Port Clinton. Working with the other service providers here in the, in the community and individuals walking around our, our town, we're trying to compile a list of, of those that do not currently use Republic to inform them as, as is required by contract, that they need to transfer their service, discontinue their service with their current provider, transfer service to Republic by the end of the third quarter. This is done for a variety of reasons and it's needed, we can talk about those, but I want to let everyone know that isn't using Republic, that those letters will be coming and you'll need to make those proper arrangements, again, by the end of quarter three of, of this calendar year. The boil alert, as we just learned, has transpired. I want to give a personal thank you to Eric Peterson, Tracy Colston, Dave and their crews for doing, Dave Basak, for doing a tremendous job. If you ever have an opportunity to watch the crews at Worth fixing a, a water line break, I, I had my first opportunity the other day. It was, it was something. They, they're knee-deep, waist-deep, thigh-deep in, in water, spraying all over the place, covered in mud, trying to, to get everything fixed in a timely fashion. Although the temperature was still in the 70s, they were all shivering by the time they came out of that hole. And I, I just can't imagine what that would be like when it's four degrees outside. It just, I'm thankful I sit behind a desk in air conditioning and heat when I, when I saw that. You know, they, they, they were very concerned and you could see it on their face and through their comments, you know, they're, they're not only trying to get the water on, you know, because they, they feel that pressure, but they realize it's their kids in school that don't have water. It's their, their spouses and significant others that are, that are dealing without water throughout their community. Now, there was some great, great feedback on, on communications. During that whole process, we communicated with the local EMA, the Ohio EMA, the Ohio EPA, who actually gave us great commendations and a follow-up conversation today about our communication skills, the regional water supply, the regional water system, the schools, the hospitals, nursing homes, the media outlets, both social and, and mainstream media, emails, Facebook, the, there, there were several announcements made over the, the police and fire radio. One of them I, I made over the fire radio yesterday advising people of boil alert. There were emails sent out and, and press releases out to radio, tweets, cell phone calls, phone calls. I was actually interviewed on a television station and it aired at 11 o'clock last night. So, we, we did try to do our best to get it out to, to as many people as possible. And finally, it says pause for the applause. And finally, just to give counsel an update on the infrastructure plan and the discussion throughout the community, last Wednesday, I held a, a public meeting down at the R-Gast Inn in Sweets. And although the, it was invited guests, the community was involved and then we talked about, I created these think tank discussions last week. We had about 51 people in attendance, although two of them didn't count because they were from Thailand. And about 80% of that group was from the think tank, 20% were from the, the general public. And at the end of hearing the same presentation you all heard over the past couple of weeks, I asked the, the folks in attendance four questions. I first asked them to close their eyes, because I didn't want their answer to be influenced by what they think their neighbor saw or what, you know, so, everybody closed their eyes and I asked them four questions. The first one was, are we silly for doing this? Nobody raised their hand. The second question was, is this project, is the scope of this project too extreme? Nobody raised their hand. The third question was, is this project right on target? Is it a good thing for, for the city? About 75% of the people in the room raised their hand. And then finally, I said, does this project not go far enough? Should there be more? Should we be addressing more issues in the city? And about 25% of the people in attendance that night raised their hand. It's been out there for a little over a month now, what we're doing, it was announced here in city council chambers. It's been on so, social media, we've had calls from other media outlets. I have not, and I'm sure this is going to change, but I have not had anyone come up to me and say, Snyder, you're, you're Looney Tunes for trying this in town, this is a horrible idea. I have not heard any negative feedback, if, if counsel has received any negative feedback. So, I, as we move forward here, I would love to hear, I'm expecting, what, what, what are we missing? What, what's, what's going on here? So, I'm, I'm asking for you to, to tell me what's, what's going on.
I, I have voiced a little bit of negative feedback, as I'd like to see some of those changes of roads that were included in the dollar figures, because some of those roads are pretty sizable. And that would really change the dollar figure drastically. Along with the road like Sixth Street, which is newer street, portions of Fulton, which are newer streets, those are all part of that stuff that was on there, which I'd love to see that readdressed before continuing.
There is going to be another, thank you, there is going to be another public meeting in a much larger venue, the High School Performing Arts Center. One night in September, the 26th of September to be exact, at 6:00 p.m. at the Performing Arts Center, we will have a, another public meeting, same presentation that, that folks have heard. We're trying to get as, as many people to hear the story and, and get some, some feedback on that as, as possible. So, plan on attending, 6:00 p.m. on the 26th, I believe that's a Thursday, at the High School Performing Arts Center. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Please note that she said finally in the minutes.
Thank you. We'll move to the treasurer's report, or excuse me, the auditor's report. He took up so much space, he took his spot.
I was going to ask if we can rearrange the agenda so I don't have to follow. Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gatfield. The treasurer's report.
Well, Madam President, I do have numbers to report. You'll be happy to hear, bed taxes are up to $103,674.60, and they're still coming in.
Thank you. Thank you. The law director's report.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The safety service director's report.
I believe the mayor pretty well covered anything I was going to say, so, nice for tonight. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The Police Chief's Report.
I too could go there, but the only thing I want to reiterate is schools are back in session, so please slow down for our students. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I thought I saw Chief come in.
Yeah, strange face.
Do you have anything for the safety?
Nothing like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we have no correspondence this evening, so we'll move to the readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings. We'll move to second readings. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 21-19?
Ordinance 21-19. Ordinance authorized and directing this director of safety and service to issue requests for qualifications to negotiate and enter into an agreement with construction management services for Junction Street or got small cities grant project.
Does Council wish to take any action on Ordinance 21-19? Seeing none, Ordinance 21-19 will be moved to its third reading at our next regular council meeting on September 10th, 2019. We'll move to new readings. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 22-19?
Ordinance 22-19. Ordinance authorized and directing the director of safety and service to enter into a contract with the Board of Trustees of the Taba Island Township for the city to provide emergency ambulance services within Taba Island Township and declaring emergency.
Does Council wish to take any action on Ordinance 22-19? Seeing none, Ordinance 22-19 will be moved to its second reading at our next regular meeting on September 10th, 2019. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ordinance 23-19?
Ordinance 23-19. An ordinance authorized and directing the director of public safety and service to enter into a contract to furnish fire protection to the township of Portage, Ottawa County, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Does Council wish to take any action on Ordinance 23-19? Seeing none, Ordinance 23-19 will be moved to its second reading at our next regular meeting on September 10th, 2019. We will now move to business from the floor. Mrs. Sardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad to see I drove by the Senior Center. It's nice and wet, it's finally getting going. It's been a couple of years, three, almost four years, I think, that we've been trying to get things moving. And I should thank Dave Kobel and the staff for working on that. Really appreciate it. It would be really nice. And also, with the water main break, thanks for all that you've done. Thank Eric and everybody, Tracy and Dave and this group for the quick response. I know it's hard, there's been some concern expressed for notifications. It's hard, as we all know, to notify everyone. So, you know, as citizens, like Mr. Nipper did, would contact people that you know and you know about the stuff. It's communication with everyone. So, you know, I saw it on several places, and I understand people have Facebook and other, you know, ways to be notified, but I appreciate what the administration did to get people notified and updated for that. Thank you to all that submitted photographs, and congratulations to the winners. And for everything that Arts Council does, thank you for the art walks and everything that your ideas that have come through. A lot of stuff has come to fruition, and what you said you're going to do, we really appreciate it. Makes it all better. And then congratulations to the people that got who see keys to the city and saying, I know that they stepped out. The next infrastructure meeting is Tuesday, September 3rd, at 6:30. And the next Parks and Health will be Tuesday, September 10th, at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Does it agree then?
Actually, I have two questions tonight. First one goes to Mr. Martin and the mayor. With the Republic Services contract finalized, do we have an updated pricing on what that is, or what the rest of the services that we were looking to go after, that, is there any way we can get that mailed out to them?
I believe that was sent out to all Council today. It was notification.
I apologize, I did not see any.
If it was not, I thought that it was, but...
I do believe that, yeah. Communication came from the disaster.
Perfect. Thank you. The second question I have is directed towards the law director. As far as the ban for having different companies servicing trash within the company, within the city, if that trash bin is not on the boulevard, and let's say it's on the side of a home, is that still allowed to happen? Because it's not in the city's property, it's not visible for anyone?
No, the way the contract is written, the way the statute, the statute, the city can put up bids and enter the contracts, they'll recall residential properties, and the contract applies what residential property gives, and those people would be required to use the contract that the city has, as, get it into the agreement.
So, you couldn't have a bin from another company anywhere in the city, which means, let's say, when we do each cleanup, you can't have Cyclone Services anywhere.
Not like that type of, where you do a cleanup, or you're doing construction, but are certain exceptions and not what your normal usage has to be.
Okay?
Commercial can have anybody, in light, and special projects, I pointed you, I said special projects, special projects can have whoever they choose.
But you have that trash bin sits off the property, that it's not visible for people...
It deals with heavy vehicles on the roads.
But their vehicles are smaller than outlaw Republic Services.
They should have applied for what you guys voted on.
That was a, that...
Republic Services do crazy damages throughout all road, everywhere.
There was a request for, there was a request for proposals that went out, and all three of the providers in the area took out bid books, all three.
Interesting it hurts, you know.
All three, all three took out, let me just finish. All three took out bid books, met the requirements. Two came to the actual pre-bid meeting that was conducted. One backed out the day of and said they weren't interested, and the third decided to back out because they were unable to provide the services that were required.
Correct, for the city.
For recycling services that are required as part of the bid. That's why they pulled out.
Right. And I know some of the other ones pulled out because, or didn't even bother to attempt because of the size of their companies, it just...
But that's not, the city gave fair opportunity for anyone to bid this, and only one bid. And it was approved by the spot.
That's it for me. Thanks, Madam President.
Mrs. Hickman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to thank the Arts Council for everything they do in our community, bringing awareness to the arts and getting so many community members involved of all ages. The art walks have been fabulous. How many years have they been doing that now? Four, five? Where were you at, Carol? Mine. Five. Those were fabulous, and I think this contest was a great idea. I'm sorry I didn't participate. I have bad photo skills, I'll try next time. Thank you, Gary, for bringing up some great points, and I know we're a small community, and we all try to work together, and we all work very hard, and I know sometimes things get skipped over, and maybe we do need to visit some things, and, you know, thank you for bringing some awareness to this, and I'm certain it's something that all of us can work together. I'm sorry you didn't reach out to me. I was home until I got a call from the fire chief, and I had to go out. I had too many chief size, and I bossed me around. So, if you called me, I would have tried to call you in. And I know the fire department was out for three hours running around last night. Those guys were starving, they called back for them, and Marcos wasn't open, and I was going to go get a pizza, they weren't open because of the water boil. Anyways, I'd also like to wish everybody a safe and happy Labor Day weekend. I know this is one last big rock for all of us. The weather looks fantastic. The Four P's is going on, I can't believe, nobody mentioned that yet. So, oh, sorry, Bob. But everybody go out and enjoy our area. We have so much to offer here. Please go out and have some fun this weekend, enjoy life. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. I am involved, I love the community involvement. If you just look at the number of people here, and if you hear others speak, or whatever, it is so nice to see it, and I feel we have a trend now that we are feeling more community involvement rather than community detriment. The thing I would also say is, we have schools that have the reverse 9/11, so perhaps a reverse 9/11 to everybody who registers their phone number with a phone bank, who get a call saying, we have a water boil. Maybe later on, water boil is still on, maybe after that, the water boil is now ended. By using this reverse 9/11, I think that would be a way, because I don't do Twitter. I get on Facebook every two weeks just to hear what people are saying about me, and to see what your pictures are on, but that's about it. I mean, I use the cellphone, and the texting, my gosh, I could do texting too, but a lot of people don't text. But I just keep thinking, the reverse 9/11 is probably a good way to go if you register your phone number with them. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman.
Madam President, I'd like to be involved where Mrs. police sets in the future. I would like to thank the administration and the citizens for speaking up about the communication issues. I know it's hard to tackle. Gary had some valid points, or some other residents had a great input on how to deal with that. It was an unfolding situation. I thought they got the information to us quickly. It was nice to see residents talking to each other and telling neighbors about it, and getting the word out when that happened. And I think we have an administration, Mr. Martin, that listens to input and will actually make positive changes going forward. Some great input there. I'd like to congratulate Garrett's Council. I reiterate everything everybody said about that earlier. It's one bond, not artistic, but I appreciate everything you've done in the community, and the photographers, I mean, what talent, the beautiful images. I would also like to mention, the mayor mentioned football, but the real football, or soccer, is playing tomorrow night at the stadium, beautiful stadium. Both the boys and girls have home games Wednesday, they both have home games Saturday. They're doing a wonderful job. The girls are having a winning season, the boys have been pulling out some close games, they had a tie last night. It's a very exciting sport, and it is the original football, so if anybody has an opportunity or athletic passes, do work for those games. The Perch Peach-Poca Paroka Festival, Paroki Festival is this weekend, that runs Friday through Sunday. It's a great event, music, parokis, food. Before that, on Friday, at One Kim at the Park House, is Overdose Awareness Day, and the Opiate Collaborative will be unveiling the, if you haven't seen the silhouettes around the community, they unveil those to raise awareness for the overdoses in the community. It's a great event, to get out there, just listen to that. That's it, Madam President. Everybody else, wonderful, excellent. Thank you.
Mrs. Gilman. Mr. Helf.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, the schools, if you have kids, you know they use that Honeywell Institute, that's a pretty good program for school delays or closings. Wondered, wonder maybe if we could kind of partner with them for certain alerts, just as long as the mayor doesn't use it for Ohio State scores, or things like that, but I know a lot of parents or grandparents who have no problem using that, because it's phone calls, it's not texts, it's not social media. Because I remember last year, when my house flooded, and any of your guys' houses flooded, they had to clean up for people whose houses were flooded of Jefferson Street, and there were a lot of older people that didn't know anything about it. And I know there were a lot of efforts used to try to get them informed, but maybe something like that Honeywell, or reverse 9/11 would be a really good idea for tornado alerts, or any of those settings in the future. I do appreciate Mr. Nipper's comments. There are a lot of people that will complain on other platforms, but won't come in here and address the council, and also I appreciate you doing that. You got, you called me last night, I got with Mr. Martin, the mayor, and got whatever answer they could give me right away, and tried to get it to you as soon as possible. But I do believe that there, maybe with Honeywell or something, there could be a much better way of informing for emergencies like that, so maybe that's something, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing open to business? Excuse me? Hold on, the mayor had some...
One more.
Oh, I have this much space.
Okay. Tips, do you mind standing up for a moment? This young lady has been in our community for the past three months, and I'm going to try to do this without crying. This coming Sunday, she and two of her friends will be leaving. I just want to say thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Now, seeing open to business.
Madam President, I move this office by adjournment.
I will second. Every other's paper. I. In your post. Now, we'll be here.